Good evening. It is Thursday, June 6, 2024 at 6:00 PM. We are at the District Service Center in Cottage Grove, Minnesota. We would like to acknowledge that the land on which we gather is the land of the Medawakaton Dakota People. Medawakaton means dwellers of the Spirit Lake. Our first item on the agenda is roll call. Dana?
Ryan Clark.
Here.
Sharon Benlier.
Eric Tesmer is absent. Pat Driscoll is absent. Melinda Dolez.
Here.
Katie Short.
Here. 2.0 pledge of allegiance. Please stand. Okay, 3.0 approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motioned by Sharon, seconded by Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Onto 4.0, our workshop items. We have one this evening. It's 4.1. Title III, English Language Learner Services, introduced by Kelly Jansen, Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm here to introduce our multilingual services update. We have two members of our department, Nikki Kleimer, our EL supervisor, and Danilo McCarthy, our EL family liaison. Danilo was also one of our Sawashco All-Stars this year. If you were at the employee banquet, he was nominated as an All-Star. He does amazing work with our families. So they're going to talk a little bit about the families we serve in EL in Title III, what types of services our students receive, and in particular, some of our new-to-country students and things that were happening in our schools, and then some of the opportunities for our multilingual learners in general. So I will turn it over to them.
Okay. Everybody hear me okay? No? Okay, I'll try to talk a little louder. Is that better? Okay, here we go. So we want to share with you some information. Are our multilingual learners, how do we ensure all perspectives are valued, and how do we equitably serve all students? And some of the things that we will discuss are student demographics, languages spoken, EL identification, and our wonderful staff in our department. So the very first onboarding that all families participate in is what's called our Home Language Survey. And at enrollment, families are asked to indicate if another language is spoken at home. And from the responses that families share with us, we get to work to identify if those students are eligible for EL service. And that process is mandated by the Minnesota Department of Education. And so we follow that procedure very, very tightly. And this needs to be done within the first 30 days of the start of the school year. So the beginning of the school year is a very important time for our staff and students. Once students are identified as needing EL service, it is the law that they're entitled to an education program that provides access to core content and opportunities for English language development across K-12. We differentiate our EL service depending on the needs of our students and what English proficiency level that they are at. And so just as an example, we might have a student who is nearly proficient in English, and they might be supported in one co-taught class at a secondary school. And we also have students that come in with absolutely no English. So our service is differentiated by that. So who are multilingual learners? Well, it's growing. There are more than 14, 50 students, K-12. We have representation in all of our buildings and schools. And many of our students are emergent multilinguals who often speak three or four languages. They're comprised of 82 home languages, which is really amazing. Just let that sink in for a minute. If we look at some of our most dominant languages, this spectrum rainbow represents all of the languages: Spanish, Hmong, Chinese Mandarin, and then you can see Somali, Amharic, Vietnamese, Arabic. And it seems like every week there's a student that comes with a language that we have to look up and learn about. So it's been really fun to welcome students with all different backgrounds to our district. Our multilingual learners are a very diverse group of students, and they come with many different backgrounds and many needs. Here's some examples of different kinds of multilingual learners. Most of our multilingual learners are born in the United States, and that often surprises people. We have students here that are refugees. We have students that are what we designate as SLIFs. These are students with limited formal education. We have long-term English learners. We have duly identified English learners. And we have new-to-country students. So it is a very diverse group of learners. We have noticed an increase of our new-to-country students across the district. And this is defined as a student that is born outside the United States. And the Department of Education defines this as being in the United States for the last three years. And this makes up about 16% of our EL-identified students in our district. We also have recently arrived ELS, and these are students that have been here for less than 12 months. And these students are reported to MDE annually. So these numbers were taken in January, and so they have gone up since then. Again, some of our new-to-country students come with very little education or they have gaps in their education. And so this has been a unique group of students that we have been working to support this year and build district supports for these students. Where do our students come from? You can see that this is an incomplete list, mostly because we ran out of room on the slide. We kept adding to it. But a lot of our students are from Central and South America, as well as sprinkled in from all over the world. So it's pretty cool. We have new-to-country students at every grade level. It's pretty consistent, too, if you see that bar graph. And so we've created some goals for our department and for our district to support this group of students. First and foremost, we want to welcome our newcomers to a safe, inclusive, and thriving school environment. We want to concentrate on supports for their social, emotional, and mental health needs. We want to work to provide high-quality instruction. It might look a little different. It does look different for our new-to-country students. And we are working tirelessly to establish partnerships with our families. We've also prepared this newcomer toolkit that was shared with every building so that when they have students and families arrive, just provide some good resources for the schools. Our department is growing. We have myself, and we have our wonderful EL liaison, Danilo. We have 10 EL paraprofessionals and 42 EL teachers. And building community is one of our priorities in our department. And I am going to let my esteemed colleague talk about some of the things that we're doing right now to make that happen.
Good evening. As Nikki said, my name is Danilo McCarthy. I have been working for Sawashco School as an EL liaison since October 2022. One of my responsibilities is to create and implement inclusive system of support for multilingual families and students across the district. I also have been working assisting multilingual families during the enrollment process and connecting them with resources and welcoming them to the school district. So what I learned in these two years that we have great resources in Sawashco School District and also outside the Sawashco School District. And my responsibility is connecting families to those resources and access to those services. Some of those resources, just to mention some of them. We have Maquisne Bento Program that has been very helpful for families. It's supporting families that are homeless or experiencing inequitable housing. For example, we have families that are sleeping in the floor or in the basement. And when we find out about that situation, we connect with a homeless liaison, and we are able to find air mattress or pillows, blankets for those families. So it's very helpful for them. And also, sometimes they need self-care items, like essential self-care items, and we can get those things through this program. Sawashco Skir is good, too, especially in winter. We have families came here during winter without winter clothing. Some students, I know that some student went to school during winter in sandals. So we connected right away with Sawashco Skirs, and we are able to get winter clothing for them and for their parents, too. Sawashco Community Education, they have really great programs there, and we are connecting the families to those programs. For example, early childhood programs, early childhood screening, especially those programs where families coming from, we don't have those program in their home country. So we have to educate them and make sure that they have access to those programs. Kids Club is very helpful for families because some of them has to work since early hours in the morning to night. And these create a safe place for the families that can take the students before or after school. And many sports and activities that Sawashco Community Education offer for them. Sawashco School also provide a job opportunity for our multilingual families new to the country. Some of them, they are professional from their home country, and we are able to help them to navigate the system to transfer their credit here in the United States. And those diploma are valid here, and they were able to apply for a job in the Sawashco School District. For example, we have two teachers that they got hired here, two, three paraprofessional, and two custodian. Outside the school district, we are connecting family with those resources, too. For example, footshelves. We have so many great footshelves around this area. And South Washington County, at the beginning of school year, we invite a health worker from South Washington County to come and provide information to families. And after that meeting, we got some phone calls, families telling us that they were able to access to paying for bill energies, also for insurance. And there was a family that connected us, telling us that they had a health emergency. And she went through three surgery, two heart surgery, and the bill was over $150,000. And at the county, they have a program that they were able to help the family to pay for this program. Another program that we recently find out and we are connecting and working with them very closely is Solid Ground Housing Program, where they assist family to find a house, and they pay the rent for those families. So we were able to help four families, four multilingual families new to the country, sign up for this program. And a few weeks ago, one of the families got a house, and the program will pay for the rent for one year. One of the first things that I do when I got hired here was connecting with parents to find out about the challenges and also how we can support them. And one of the parents that I'm working is Alma Valencia. She has three students in our school district, elementary, middle school, and a high school, and she has been here for four years. And she kindly recorded this video for us to learn about her experience at Sawashco School. Like Alma, we got phone calls about parents thanking the school district for supporting them. We got many phone calls about they're seeing more interpreters in open houses, conferences, and also for special events, and information on getting home in their home language. They really appreciate that. So also, we offer many multicultural opportunities for our families and students, not only for them to share about their culture, but also they have the opportunity to learn about other cultures and connecting with other parents and students and staff. Some of the programs that we have is the EL Family Engagement that is required by Title III. Silo Bil literacy. This offers opportunities. Any student that is bilingual in the school district are offered an opportunity to test, show proficiency in English and other language. And they can get up to four college semester credits. And it's good because parents are telling me like, oh, we cannot afford to pay, but the school district pays for this. So it's been very helpful for families. Also, the EL department organized multicultural family picnic every other year. So next year, we're going to have an event. And also, many school-sponsored culture events through the school years. And we also working, as I say before, very closely with the community education, referring our parents to the ESR classes. And we are partnering with the Department of Equity and Inclusion to make sure that everything that we're doing for our families align to the core values of the school district. Nikki?
I can see why he was an All-Star. We really enjoy off-site learning opportunities. And here are just two examples of some of the things that we did this year. We had an opportunity to go to Carpenter Nature Center with some of our multilingual students at Altman Middle School, rather. We actually did build fires, so that was interesting, but great. We took a group of high school students to participate in Feed My Starving Children. One thing that was really great about this opportunity is a lot of these students didn't have a lot of intern experience on their resumes. And so their EL teachers found an opportunity for them to add that during the school day. So that was a fantastic opportunity. So we really feel that Sawashco is a great place to be a multilingual learner, and we are working to make this the school district of choice for multilingual learners. Thank you.
Thank you both. Anyone have any questions?
Okay. Sorry. I was looking around first. Thank you so much for this. So I had just a couple of questions. So at the beginning, you talked about all the different kinds of multilingual learners we have in the district. Are there some types of multilingual learners who are more quicker to progress out of multilingual learning adaptations than others? Like, for example, kids who are born in the US or kids who are new to country, or whichever subgroup that is?
Generally speaking, generally, students that speak a language that's similar to English tend to progress quicker through the levels.
So is that like a Western European language or like Spanish?
Spanish, Italian, French. But there's a lot of variables. It depends on the level of support. It depends on the student's first language and their level of literacy in their first language. So it's hard to say, you know, it's hard to make a prediction.
So if they're more likely to be literate, like say they can read fluently in Spanish and they're 10 years old or whatever, they're more likely to be able to adapt or get, move out from getting EL services in our district versus someone who is still learning how to read in their native language?
That is true.
Okay. And so you were mentioning that the number of EL students we have has grown a lot since January. And so how frequently do we get a new EL student in the district?
Almost every day.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I would say almost every day. And I could provide more specific data I could get back to on that, but yeah, it's rolling. Right now, we have a lot of enrollments that are coming in for Right now, we have a lot of enrollments that are coming in for next fall.
Okay.
Or, you know, the end of the year, we're for next fall. But we've had people at the window every day.
Oh, wow. Okay. And so in these students' families, do, you know, for some of them, do they have any English speakers in their families? You know, so for example, well, I'm thinking of my spouse, right, who was an EL student when he was a child, but his parents spoke English, right? But he didn't speak English when he moved to the US, right? So, and he's presumably learned English at this point. But, you know, how do we have, are there a lot of those kinds of families or any of those kinds of families? Or is it typically the whole family is in need of EL services?
So a lot of our brand-new-to-country students, a lot of our Spanish speakers right now do not have an English-speaking family member. So, you know, it really varies who, you know, somebody lives with if they have access to an English speaker. We have a little bit of everything, but we have noticed that many of our new-to-country students are arriving with very limited resources and limited education. And their English is very much at the emerging stage.
Okay. And so do you have a lot of multilingual staff on your, I mean, I know Danilo is, right? But like, do you have, and what languages do they speak? Because if there's 82 languages, presumably we don't have 82.
Yeah, so we really rely on our language tools. We rely on Language Line. We use interpreters to help us when we don't have a staff member that speaks the student or family's home language. That's what we do right now. And, you know, it's a growing need in our district.
So for like, for the interpreters, you know, you were mentioning at Open House, Danilo having, families are noticing that they have interpreters at Open House. Do you, how, do you just know that in advance? You know, oh, we have this family, and they're an identified EL family, and so we'll make sure to have this interpreter there? Or is that something that you, well, go ahead?
Well, we do the best we can to plan for that. At the secondary level, we don't always have like a set schedule, like at the elementary schools. At the elementary schools, we arrange conferences, we make appointments, and we ensure that we have the correct language, you know, through an interpreter. At the secondary schools, we look at our list of families that need interpreters for that school, and we make sure that we have interpreters available onsite.
Okay. And then, lastly, well, I can't say lastly, but I think lastly. For the SEAL of Biliteracy, how many students in our, how many EL students in our district? If there are like 20 students in 12th grade, what percentage of those get the SEAL of Biliteracy?
26% of the students that were awarded SEALs this year were awarded a SEAL in their home primary language. So we'd have to look at that and break that down a little bit more, and I can certainly get back to you with that. But that, they might have been EL at one point and exited. So, I mean, that's our hope, right?
Right, right.
Yeah, so.
And then, do we, you know, for any student who wants to take the stamp test or whatever we give for the SEAL of Biliteracy, I'm assuming that's, we have something similar. What, are there any barriers? Or are there any students who want to take it in a language that we don't provide? And then, if so, what do we do for them?
Yeah, so we, there's a list that Minnesota provides. And this year, we had 21 languages that were requested, and we were able to meet those needs. We awarded SEALs in 11 languages.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
That's all I had.
Yeah.
I promise.
Thank you.
You should have.
Any other questions? Okay, not seeing any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so on to 5.0, information items. 5.1 is preliminary budget for 2024-25 fiscal year, and that will be presented by Chris Blackburn, Director of Business Services.
Well, good evening. That's going to be really tough to act, to follow, I think. So I'm always excited to wave at Danilo or hear him visiting with families up front, or see Nikki as well. So we did get pictures last year, so we, in finance support, just through the Title III programming some. And so last year, we did get invited to the picnic. Even though we couldn't attend, we got pictures later. And we're like, oh, my gosh, please keep inviting us because some year we're going to get to go. And it looked amazing, so it's fun to hear a little more about that as well. So tonight, I'm providing the financial update, or my financial update is the 24-25 preliminary budget that we'll consider, speak about tonight, and then consider approving for at the next meeting. The agenda on it, on the next slide, is just to talk about budget notes and terms. Where does the money come from? We'll talk about what it is spent on, just some highlights of the budget itself, some challenges we face, as well as a future schedule. So our budget is, the general fund budget alone is more than 18,000 lines. I actually had fortunate to update that. We had 21,000 lines for quite some time, and with the absence of some of the federal funds during COVID, we were able to reduce that, so that's kind of exciting for us. That said, it's still, if we do just one minute on every line, it would take about 300 hours, which I did the math on, and I think it came up to seven and a half weeks if just one person worked on it. So I'm extremely grateful to have, Dan and I both have a team that works on that budget. So many of the revenues, and I would say at this point, all of them are estimated. We certainly might know some specifics about maybe a specific salary for an individual. Because on the next line, you know, we calculate salary and benefit for each employee. But to that end, we also know that there is open enrollment for benefits and things. We do a lot of estimation on salaries, benefits, what utilities cost. I always joke that we should just, in fact, I do now have a magic eight ball on my desk, but we have not used it for budget. But sometimes it does feel we make the best educated guess based on the information we have in front of us. The salary and benefits, I said, we do each employee. I think Dan has teased me about it nearly every year. We started out doing it just of abundance of caution because our budget, our fund balance was so low when Dan and I first started. And so we've continued to do that process just because we provide, it provides the most accurate. And with 80% roughly of our budget being on salary and benefits, we feel it's extremely important to be as accurate as we can. The budget itself is just a guide. So it's not a, this is how exactly we're going to end up. I've heard people say before in industry, the one thing we can guarantee is it's incorrect. But it is that guide to keep us on track. And so again, we make the best assumptions based on what we know today for next year. So it helps us keep solvent. For the budget terms, we have fund balance typically, the one that we focus on is unassigned balance. So that is really the funds that are available for just general operations. And so we talk about instruction, so the teachers and paras, instructional support, whether it's counselors or account APs, transportation, maintenance, activities, and administration as well, whether district or school level. That's all utilized by unassigned fund balance. We focus a lot on the percentage of fund balance, which is really just the balance divided by the, as a percent of the expenditures. It's kind of our savings account. And our board goal, except by policy, is 16% by 2027. That does not include any funds to the reserve by statute. And there, you'll see on the next slide, there's quite a long list of reserved funds by statute. These can really just only be used for the purposes that are allowed under statute. And so whether at school nutrition, it has to stay there, community services. You'll see construction. We can only use construction funds for construction projects. Capital projects levy, which we recently, through tremendous support again of our community, increased. And that can only be used for technology and some other specific purposes in statute. The last one I'll point out is the bottom one for alternative teacher professional pay system, or ATPPS. I will note that right now, as a district, we've committed those dollars. And so the state just changed it, changed it to a restricted balance. But that does help provide that, a program that we are able to participate in, and we will be moving that. So it's more just the highlight and a foreshadowing of that we will ask for, need a revision to our committed fund balance resolution, which is required when you commit fund balance. So some notes on the budget that, again, if we reduce or increase spending in those reserve funds, it does not affect our unassigned fund balance. And then spending in those funds is limited by the targeted revenues. So not only in amount, but in purpose of those revenues. Tuition agreements. So for students living outside, outside, outstate, like, not just, I don't mean where I grew up in rural Minnesota, but actually Wisconsin, Iowa, and the other state in the Union, tuition is $13,031.26 for secondary students and $10,876.05 for elementary, based on the latest state aid projection. So we're not actually allowed to allow students from out-of-state just to attend our schools for free. The state doesn't provide aid on those either, so we have to recoup the cost via tuition. Within our state, students who live outside district boundaries that are receiving special services, they create tuition dollars. And so there's a state process by which they adjust our special education revenue. So whether they're students of ours that are being served elsewhere in that first bullet, or if they're living in our schools, I kind of probably said that backwards. If they're living in our district, getting services elsewhere, or if we're providing services for another district. So that billing process works both ways. New funding. So last year, we had a whole long slide on new funding. They were real active last legislative session, this past, most recent one. There wasn't a lot as far as dollars, which makes sense. It wasn't a typical funding year. But there was some additional funds for the READ Act, which I know we've heard a lot about and super excited about as well. But the preliminary allocation for South Wash was $773,000. And then there's additional amount of nearly $700,000 that will be required to be used for teacher compensation. And so there's kind of a variety of restrictions around who that can be paid for and how it can be paid. And so we'll be working our way through that. I would anticipate in the next year as well, as we get more guidance. Education funding in Minnesota. So this slide just indicates our total revenue, which now has gone over $328 million, which always I, sometimes when I first started here, I was like, we're big. We just have lots more numbers. So I grew up and graduated with 62 in my class. And so I always think, holy cow. State aids, so description next to it is where those funding sources for those dollars come from. So state aids come from income and sales tax, as well as fees that are paid from the state. And then to us, 69% of our aid, $226 million, comes from that source. So the largest percentage. When we talk about having increase in basic funding, that's the line that gets increased, a portion of that. Local levies, which is really generated by local property taxes, and we've had extremely supportive taxpayers. So we have $88 million currently in local levies, about 27% of our revenue, federal aids, which we get a real minor percent of the total budget. So it's less than 2% now, at just over $5 million. And then other revenues, which is local participation fees and interest are the largest components of that, and that's $7.8 million, just over 2%. This chart then shows the 2023 actual, the 24 revised, and the 25 preliminary revenues in those categories. And so you can see we're projecting overall a six, just a shy of 6.5% change in total revenues for next year. The largest component of that is the change in state aids as far as dollar change is the most significant. And again, that was the 2% raise, which will, or increase in basic formula, along with special ed. Local levies, it's largely an increase in part to do the capital projects levy that we increased. Again, super appreciative of our taxpayers, as well as the inflation factor now that we successfully, the voters, supported on our operating referendum as well. We do also levy for LTFM, which is a board-approved program, and we'll be seeing that the next presentation. Not significant changes otherwise. So many times, and I believe when I did my first update to the board, we talked about enrollment, and student count really drives the budget. So we do a cohort survival methodology, and you'll notice that line looks pretty flat. If I took a ruler, I don't know that I could make it a whole lot more flat. But we know that we are experiencing and projecting for next year declining enrollment. This year, we'll graduate, are anticipated to have our largest number of students at 18,886. And next year, we're projecting only 18,718. As you can see on the chart too, that it does, it really just stays kind of declining to flat, and we know that with the demographic study, kindergarten classes, and people, you know, there's just fewer children that are coming into our schools. So that'll be a continue for us to monitor as we move forward in how do we adjust and look at, you know, whether, how we structure schools or what program we have and which buildings and things. What, how can we do that uniquely? Because we know that'll impact our funding. On the next slide then, the revenues, just some other notes. So again, the enrollment decrease projected to be 168 students. That's based on what we know today. We know that will change, but as of today, that's what we're anticipating. The basic formula, again, that approved in this, not this past session, session before, was 2% for this year. And so that was, I remember, recall Dan saying, we were a little disappointed with just 2% in the historic funding year, but we're still appreciative of the increase. So now the basic formula is $7,281 per student. Special ed is another major source of state aid. We are now pushing $52 million in state aid on special ed. Part of that was there's a cross-substitute reduction aid as well, which reduces that portion that the general fund previously paid, both on EL and on special ed. Federal government used to always promise that they would fund 40% of special education services mandated, and they have never achieved, I don't think, over 20%, I think. And I think it's actually even lower than that. The other revenue, again, that operating levy that was approved in 2021, we're super appreciative of our taxpayers and the support that our community provided for us. That provides about $1,992 per student. And then we do have the increase, increase with inflation every year. So this slide is then just the summary of our 25, 24-25 preliminary budget summary. And so there you can see the revenues which we spoke about, the $328 million, increase of 6.46%. And the expenditures, though, we are anticipating at a higher pace at 8.69%. I will note then, the bottom line is a net, right now, projected to be a deficit of just over $5 million. I would say that was a planned, you know, when we were talking much earlier, I said, you know, as we've, with 2% in that basic formula increase and things, and it certainly reflects the investment that we made in our staff in this last contract negotiation cycle. And I think it was much needed. We had a lot of staff members who were experiencing a lot of inflation pressures on their own households as well. And you look at what, even in the private sector, what people are being paid, just the challenges that we faced with staffing to be able to attract and retain employees was part of our operational plan as well, that how do we make ourselves really an attractive place to work and stay? And so we mindfully made some investments in that area, and so hopefully that will, we'll see the fruition of that. And I think we have in our staffing models already. As we've looked to special education, being better staffed this year as we're looking to next year. Nutrition services, transportation around, that we have definitely seen improvements in those. So unfortunately, the state funding is still running behind inflation. So even though we're experiencing it and our staff are experiencing it, our funding hasn't kept pace with that. So thus, the deficit that we're projecting right now. Again, revenues increased 6.46. Expenditures outpaced that at 8.69. And again, that net reduction to fund balance currently projected to be $5 million. The biggest on the expenditure side, special education has a projected increase in expenses of $13.69 that most significantly is salary and benefits. And I'll refer you to the budget book that was provided as well. There is some more details about those expenditures by category within. Regular instruction, again, which makes up the predominance of our expenditures, increased 8.65 projected. Instructional support is 9.5. And again, those all impact students every day. Sites and buildings, we're expecting an increase of 12.31%. And that's largely LTFM with the, which the plan was approved last July for spending for the 25-year. And then administration and district support, and expense increases combined of about 1.61. So again, I'm pleased to say that where we're spending our dollars is on our students directly. This is expenses by program, or I used to call it by function, kind of like, what do we spend it on? Not just the, kind of the who or the what, but how, like, in what areas? And so administration, district support services, which includes finance, HR, technology, regular instruction, which again is our classroom teachers, paraprofessionals that are in the classrooms as well, vocational instruction, which would be any career technical education, special instruction, which is the special, students receiving special education services, community services. We have a small part for our voluntary pre-K program, as well as our school readiness plus, which has now been rolled into voluntary pre-K. Instructional support services, which is, consists not only of our TLS department, but also assistant principals and such. Some technology support in there as well, that's direct to classroom and pupils. Pupil support services is largely transportation, and are such things as lunch recess parrots would be included in there as well, and along with counselors. would be included in there as well, and along with counselors and social workers are in that category. Sites and buildings, which is really all of our facilities, that we have many of. And so last category is other, and I'll just make a note that that's scholarships, that we run through our general fund, that are outside sources, but that we control through here. Expenditures by programs, here's our lovely dollar bill. Classroom instruction, we're still at forty-four, we're at forty-four cents on the dollar. Special ed is now at twenty-two cents, and student support is eleven. And I highlight those three because seventy-seven cents of our dollar goes directly to our students, supporting their education. Instructional support, also kind of, I would say more impacts the staff to some extent, our TLS and our assistant principals as well, five cents. And then facilities is twelve cents. Again, when we have the square footage, we do, we do need to invest in custodians, as well as even that's utilities. Snow plowing, which we'll hope for a nice another winter this year. District support, again, three cents on the dollar, and administration is also three cents, both school and district administration is in that category. The next slide is unassigned fund balance projection. So we take a look at all those reserved fund spending in those categories, and take a look at what's unassigned as well, and come up with dollars, and this is that percentage we were talking about earlier of the whole expenditure, or of the unrestricted expenditures as well. And so right now we're projecting at the end of twenty-four to be at thirteen point five, and at the end of twenty-five, we would be at ten point six percent. So again, we are seeing a decrease that was certainly anticipated, and we'll continue to monitor that, look for efficiencies and how we can make adjustments where we can, and continue to take a look at that, because again, our board goal is sixteen percent by the end of twenty-seven. Factors as we look forward, enrollment, it's by far the biggest driver of our revenue, and always so important as we look, and to make sure that we're reporting kids accurately, as well as that we're reporting all students, and just what that does, are we having more movements, are we having more new to country students? You know, what does that look like? And we continue to kind of hope for the best, and sometimes plan for the worst a little, so. Contract negotiations, we want to be sure that this cycle, again, we made some significant investments in our staff, and we want to, as we look forward, because eighty percent is on salary and benefits, we do just have to be mindful of what that impact is as we look to the next cycles. Inflation, right now we know that, you know, we've gone to the grocery store, or I think talking to, we sit near food service, and what food costs have done in the past year for them, which certainly is not a general fund cost, but we've certainly experienced it as well on our supplies and such. Staffing, I put this on here because with earned safe and sick time, which many of you probably have experienced as well as your own jobs, but the, just the substitutes with how we have to do with some of their leave time, and what we can ask, and how we can, and some employees are earning it that didn't previously earn it. And so we'll know that there'll be some impacts a little bit. What we aren't sure is what that looks like for substitutes. Are those always in categories where we need to have a substitute? Is it, are we able to manage without? I did take a look back, and even as we have just talked staffing period, as far as overall substitutes for teachers and paras, we spent two point nine million dollars on contracted substitutes in fiscal year twenty-three, which was reflected on that slide. Three million dollars is our anticipated for twenty-four, and right now we're projecting four point four million for our next year. Again, really just a lot of uncertainty, and I think we'll continue to be cautious on that, and then if need be, we can reflect that in revised budget if we can decrease that number. Utilities is always that unknown, again, do we have a warm winter, a cold winter? Do we have a heat wave in the middle of some odd month? What does snow plowing look like? And so that's always a little, we do our best to estimate, does there a rate increase that we're not anticipating or unaware of? And then the last factor that I put on there is still the unemployment aid. This is our second year, where between-terms employees, which are those that are hourly paid, that otherwise don't work in the summer, qualify to apply for unemployment aid through the Department of Economic Development. And so it's outside of our control at all, but we do certainly see the impacts. It is, we spent, last year it was about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars was the expenditure, and they are funding that through aid, so that's good news. What we're uncertain about is what year two looks like, because there was a cap on how much the state allocated for that. So far in staffing, I think it sounds like I've been hearing good reports, that our summer staffing looks quite well, and so hopefully that reflects that perhaps people are choosing to work instead of take advantage of that program. So I'm going to step off budget for just a moment and talk internal service fund. And so I did bring this to CFAC, and so wanted to bring it to the board as well, because we do, are recommending some action. And so just some background, the definition of internal service fund. So in our audit every year, there's a page, probably eighty pages in, that talks about our internal service fund, and it's by, defined by UFARs, which is the Uniform Financial and Accounting Reporting System from MDE, it's our codes that are really long. It's used to account for the financing of goods or services provided by one department from another. And so we're not required to use internal service funds. When I used to be in public accounting, we commonly saw it in like a motor pool or a fleet vehicle service, where they're charging the using vehicle. A print shop would be another example of that as well. We currently, on the next slide, some background on ours, we've historically used our internal service fund currently for post-employment benefits, severance pension benefits for retirees, as well as other post-employment benefits, or OPEB for retiree health insurance. The severance, whoop, too quick, Sean. The severance pension benefits, in twenty-seven eighteen, we did establish an irrevocable trust for that portion, and transferred four million of assets to the trust, sorry, for the retiree health at that time, into the OPEB trust. So we're just left with the severance pension portion. What's happening is we have not contributed as a district funds to the internal service fund in more than ten years, so we haven't had any inflows other than interest earnings into that fund. And so the bottom bullet says, basically, the auditors have told us that it's not operating as a true internal service fund any longer, per the governmental accounting standard board. And so at June of twenty-three, the cash balance was just over two point six million, and in that same year, we paid about three quarters of a million in severance pension benefit payments. So as we look at that, we have about three and a half years remaining roughly in there. And so on the next slide, our recommendation would be to close the fund as of this June, to transfer that remaining balance, whatever it is at the end of twenty-four, to the general fund, and then commit that balance for the purpose of the severance pension benefit payments. Again, with the intended, that was the intended purpose, and we would want to hold true to that. Since it's not acting like an internal service fund, we feel like this is the best action. What also happens is if we did nothing, and in that three and a half years, then the general fund, it does become a cost of the general fund, regardless of the action here. And so we just felt it was an appropriate time to recommend that change now. So on that, we will bring a resolution next board meeting to close that, and then to commit those funds, as well as with that change in the ATPPS. Next steps, board approves the twenty-four, twenty-five preliminary budget on June twentieth, so in two weeks. We'll continue to monitor the enrollment, and hopefully, you know, that will uptick some, but we do want to always be cautious. We'll start, begin the audit of our twenty-three, twenty-four year, they'll be here in July, and then be back. I feel like they're going to move in pretty much the month of October. The levy work starts in September. School board will approve the final levies in December, and then we'll present the audit to the school board as well, typically in January, just with the timing of our audit on our cycle with our auditors, that with only having one board meeting in December, it makes that difficult. And then we'll turn around and work on twenty-five, twenty-six budget. So I tell people all the time, we have two seasons really in finance, and that's audit and budget. So with that, I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Does anybody have any questions?
I just have one quick question. So you were talking earlier in your report about students that come from out of state, and I'm guessing more like Wisconsin. I wasn't aware that we had that, and they pay tuition. Around how many students do we have that, and do that?
You know, I will get that answer for you, all that, feed it through Julie, I don't know that offhand, we don't get too many very often. I know they work through student information, so we'll get asked. Most times I think we see it on students coming from out of country even, that on visas that are coming through like a exchange program, so, but I'll be sure to get that information for you.
I was wondering if it was more like teachers or staff that live maybe in Hudson or right outside, and they want their kids to come?
We've occasionally been asked about that, I don't know that we've too often seen that they truly have come, but I will certainly get that information.
Thank you.
Oh, so you said that out of country, do we charge exchange students tuition?
It depends on what kind of visa is my understanding. And so I see Kelly nodding too, so I was like, I was pretty sure that it was on the visa, and on which program they're coming on. So not just anybody that comes, do we charge tuition, but there are certain scenarios in which we do. And I, like I said, if you want more details, too, Pat, I could certainly get that.
Okay, I was just waiting. So my questions are all around the internal service fund and the potential elimination of it, and I remember the auditor saying that we should probably think about doing something. So my question is, if we are, does this, does eliminating the internal service fund have any like potential long-term, like financial exposure issues for us?
So we did ask our financial advisors, Ellers, to just check in with Moody's, because we know that that's always as we have rating calls, just to see in their eyes if there was any impact, and they didn't feel that there would be any significant impact from that change. So to that end, we don't, the long-term otherwise, we will end up, that seven hundred thousand dollars that has previously been funded for the last many years, will now become a general fund expense. And so that's, you know, once that money is gone in that fund anyway, that will become a general fund, and those are negotiated benefits through contracts, but.
And so we don't anticipate that that seven hundred thousand dollar number would materially deviate from any given year to the next?
Not that it couldn't, because again, we know that our teaching staff are very experienced and have been with the district long-term. And so, and I say that group in particular, because that's, you know, just the largest bargaining group that has that benefit as well. And so it's very challenging to say that it couldn't. The past history since I've been here, that's, it stayed reasonably constant, but we certainly have seen fluctuations. And I could get you, if you want, even just some more history on what that's looked like. As we look forward, I would anticipate that there's certainly, you know, as an old auditor, we talk risk all the time, and there's certainly risk that number could change, both up or down. And so we can, right now, have that lens looking backwards and not always be certain, you know, people make decisions to stay on longer maybe, or to not retire, and not everybody qualifies for that benefit either.
Oh, okay. With the, so this is not a, it's currently a reserve fund, right? The internal service fund, or?
The internal service fund is actually its own fund right now? Yep.
So it's like nutrition services?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so when it moves into the general fund, will it become then like an assigned fund within the general fund?
And that's where, so we would have the opportunity to either commit or assign those dollars, and we're recommending committing, which is just a, so the difference between committing and assigned, assigned, basically the board says, you know, superintendent and or designee, or director of finance, director of business services, or designee, that you are able to calculate that number at the end of the year for this assignment. Committed actually takes board action to do that, and so we, to me, it's a little stronger statement to say that we knew those funds were intended for that purpose, and we would like to say we're absolutely going to continue to use these funds for that purpose.
Okay. So when those two million dollars and change go into the general fund, it won't have an impact on our unassigned fund balance, because it will have been committed to something?
Correct.
I think that's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will move on to five point two, long-term facilities maintenance plan, and that will be presented by Dan Pye, Executive Director of Finance and Facilities.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to talk about some of our construction projects. Tonight, we just wanted to give you an update on what long-term facility maintenance projects we'll be doing this summer, and in the same vein, I would like to just prep you for the next board meeting, in which we will ask for approval of the ten-year long-term facility maintenance expenditure plan. And at the same time, we'll have a revenue application that we'll submit to the state. Yeah, construction, I, I do have a couple sons that work in construction, one's a welder and one's a, it works in HVAC, and the HVAC guy, one time, my son, he, before he went commercial, he was doing a house call to fix air conditioning, he went to this guy's house, and said, well, how long did your air conditioner been out? And it was really hot, and he said, well, about two weeks. And he goes, two weeks? Why'd you wait so long to call? And he goes, well, main laws are here, and they were going to stay for a month. True story. So long-term facility maintenance revenue is generated through a combination of levy and aid. This revenue can only be used to repair and replace existing structures and lands, it may not be used for new construction, and we have plenty of that going on with our two hundred million dollar bonds. Most of repairs includes roofs, parking lots, heating and ventilating systems, classrooms, auditoriums, and other facilities. This revenue will be generated with a combination of bonding, aid, and pejago levy, and we'll talk a little bit more of that next week, but the bonding part, we generally come to the board to bond for long-term facility maintenance every two years. The MDE requires the school board to approve a ten-year LTFM plan every year, so it'll be a rolling plan. I've attached a copy of the application, we're still doing some fine tuning, it may change a little bit, but it, once you read it, it's really fine print when you have to look at it, but you can zoom your computers, but it's generally about twenty-two to twenty-four million dollars a year. The ones, the projects we're going to do this summer, which would be of interest, first of all, as we talk about, what do we, what do we need to close for buildings because of the construction? Central Park, that will be closed, you know, we use a small part of Central Park, the city of Woodbury is doing a project, we will not be back into such, we're out of there now, we will not be back into there until the end of June of twenty twenty-five. And at that point, and at some points, a lease will be brought to you, that's negotiated between the city of Woodbury and the school district. The district program center is entirely closed. Most of programming is going to be done at Armstrong Elementary School. The Park High School stadium will be closed. Woodbury High School is going to have extensive work on their electrical system. Most of the building will be closed, but we will keep the gymnastics room open, the fieldhouse open, the competition gym open, the weight room open, the pool open, and the outdoor spaces will remain operational. So why are these buildings needed to be closed? The projects that are going to happen at the district program center, we're going to replace all the HVAC systems. For those that work in this building, you're not on the schedule until twenty twenty-seven. Fire panel replacements, cabling for the ethernet, for ethernet, roof replacement, and ceilings and light replacements. At Park High School, on the outside, we're going to replace the press box, we're replacing the press box for Woodbury High School as we speak, if it's gotten here yet, we, it was all planned to be replaced, and then the truck that was hauling had an accident, and rolled it over into a ditch, so they had to take it back and fix it again. Hopefully this one will be good. Stadium concessions will be improved, the stand and the restrooms will be renovated. Stadium lighting replacement would be very similar to what we did at Woodbury High School, we're going to power wash the stadium, and we also need to renovate the boiler plant. Woodbury High School, most of the work is on the electrical system, very old electrical systems. We're replacing the Eastwind RTUs and fixing and replacing the original windows. At the transportation station, we're putting a new fuel station in, we have an underground tank now, we're going to have two above-ground tanks. We're also reconfiguring how the buses go in to fill, creating a larger space for them to turn around and to be more efficient. Fixing the parking lot, the parking lot lighting, and the roof on the bus barn. We were replacing the Valley Crossing playground, and at Woodbury Elementary School, we're replacing the playground there too. So those are the projects we're working on this summer, if you're driving around and you see, and you go, oh, that's right, we were going to do that, we're going to do that. And, and next week's, two weeks, the, the board report will include actually a list of all the projects for the next ten years, so you can refer back to it. But that will change every year as a kind of a, as-needed LTFM plan sometimes, but we, we need to look out that far as our. But we, we need to look out that far as our financing people look and sell bonds and such.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions?
Hi, Dan. How does the LTFM plan, how has it changed with the results of the bond election and then all the new construction and stuff that's happening? Have we put off a lot of projects that would have been on the, on the list to get done because we're doing all of this other work at various schools?
Yeah, for the ones that were doing the major, but they were actually marrying some of them together. So like for Woodbury High School, say they're, I don't know what the number is, I'm sorry, but say their budget's 35 million. We also have like another 15 million of LTFM that we're doing at the same time using a lot of the same resources and being a lot more efficient, getting it all done at one time. But most of the stuff in, at least the first phase, actually probably both phases, they're separate looks at it. They were considered, you know, we didn't try to throw a bunch of stuff in the bond knowing that we could use LTFM to do other stuff.
Oh, okay. So when we could have used LTFM, i-if we could have used LTFM, we pulled it into LTFM instead of adding it to the bond?
Yes, we tried to do, we tried to look at it as a, merge them together just to be more efficient on the bond.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, 5.3, first reading of proposed policy changes. And that will be presented by Julie Nielsen, Superintendent.
Thank you. We are rolling right along tonight. And maybe before I start policies, it's kind of that time of year we approve our last set of policies and then we take a little break in July. I know people sitting around the table are like, whew, thank you, one month. And a board member commented to me in the call, just saying how grateful they were that we've stayed on track with our policies. And I think for the board to know, that's really a tribute to the people who sit around the table. It does take consistency and persistence to stay on track. And I think over the course of the last three years, we've had a schedule. We've really worked to stay on track, but we also wanted to make sure that we reflected accurate policies and we took the time to review them, especially those big policies. You know, making sure that our attorney also got a look at them. So a thank you to the people around the table as we wrap up this year and this kind of session of reviewing policies. This evening, I am presenting six policies being brought forward. As usual, these policies are reviewed by our board, our board policy committee along with executive cabinet members who have also vetted the policies through the appropriate user groups. This evening, policy 213, school board committees. That one you will see just reflects the list of updated committees and titles to make sure that when you serve in that advisory role and you participate, that those committees are accurate. Policy 604, instructional curriculum, really just updated to reflect the changes in statute. 901, community education. And 902, community use of school district and facilities, there were no proposed changes. 906, community notification of predatory offenders, just updated to reflect statute. And 907, rewards, that was just updated again around the referenced statute. And so this evening, I am open to any questions. Executive cabinet members can also help with questions if there are any.
Okay, Dana, did we have anybody sign up to talk? Okay. No questions. So we will move on to 6.0, reports and comments, Superintendent.
I get to go first. That's a little bit of my voice. I will just tell you that this week is just the whole spectrum of a rainbow. You all saw the rainbow last night? Everybody get pictures of the rainbow last night after it stormed. Dan and I happened to be at the Cottage Grove City Council meeting and we were told it's going to hail. So Dan and I finished our presentation and we were out of there headed north and we hit the sun and the rainbow. But much like the school district, having gone earlier in the week to a kindergarten recognition, and if you haven't had a kindergartner in a while, I mean, you certainly would have thought that this was college graduation. I mean, the waves, the flowers, the, oh my goodness, my child is graduating from kindergarten. And I am watching some of our parents thinking, oh, it gets so much bigger. Gets so much bigger, so much bigger. But just the sheer joy and love of watching kindergarten recognition. And really to extend a thank you to our students for a great school year, our staff and our families. And with that, just to conclude and wrap up our year, our board knows, as well as our community, we celebrate well over 1,500 graduates during this course of time. On Saturday, we will graduate students from the alternative high school, South Wash Alternative High School, along with students who have participated online. And then Sunday, we will have our three comprehensive high schools. Yes, it is a whole day of fun together. And truly, I would rather not be anywhere else but in that arena. And so we will start with Park, move to Woodbury and Eastridge will be the closing graduation ceremony. And congratulations, if any of you have graduates, I know Christine Schaefer has a graduate. So our attendance from this group around the table and Dr. Brookins has a graduate as well. So our attendance may not be as consistent because we just have a lot of people having graduates right now. But we certainly, again, extend a great thank you to our students. We just have the most incredible kids. Most days they make us laugh. Every once in a while, we might get a little disappointed, but really sheer joy. And just to have that full spectrum of from kindergarten to watching these high school graduations really makes our work worth it and it makes the difficult conversations, I think, as board members, the decisions you make around policies, around budget cuts, around doing the right thing for our school district, it really matters to the kids that we serve. So thank you and thank you to our executive cabinet.
Thank you, Julie. Any board members have any events or anything that they would like to share?
I just have a quick one. Anyone, if anyone's a golfer out there, the, the foundation for the 35th Annual Golf Tournament for 916 is on June 13th. All the money goes towards the school to help the students and the programs. So if anyone's interested, let me know and I can forward you the information.
Melinda, I didn't mention in my update, it wasn't that important, but we did have golfers. So what people may not know in the community is we do have a team. You know, obviously people take vacations. We all contribute our own personal dollars. But Kelly and Dan, I'm looking around the space, golfed in the Woodbury Chamber and we will have the Cottage Grove Chamber coming up. The executive cabinet, along with our principals association, we sponsor holes, so we contribute dollars to the holes. Did we win anything, Kelly and Dan, Woodbury? I don't know if they won anything. I just know that I went for the social and I got a, what's that? I know that I went for the social and I won a free mini bund cake, not the mini one, but the next one. And someone's like, wow, I said I ate the whole thing. Not that good, but thank you for representing. So 916 is, what day did you say, Melinda? June 13th. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a quick addition if that's okay.
Yes.
So the Eastridge Raptors trap team has their state championships this weekend in Alexandria. And then in July, some of the kids qualified for nationals and there'll be a team representing Eastridge High School in the national championship in Michigan.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, on to 7.0, future meeting dates, June 20th. We will have a school board business meeting here at the district service center at 6:00 PM. Then July 18th, we do only have one meeting in July. So that will be also a business meeting here at the district service center at 6:00 PM. And with that, 8.0, we are adjourned.